Before we have to get our dogs legs to get home. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our work session. I'm told the ice is coming down. These meetings for the public and anybody here, these are essentially off week meetings so that we can discuss various matters that will come up for either votes or for discussion at our regular formal meeting which will be next Tuesday. So we don't go through the formal call, formal agenda other than the call to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mr. Schron.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Be 10 minutes late.
Ms. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Simon. Mr. Greenspan.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Brady.
Present.
Mr. Germana.
Here.
Here.
We have a number of items on the agenda. There are some agendas by the door for those who'd like a copy. The first item, too, in our discussion regarding pending health and human service contracts, I believe that is Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I'd like to bring Deb Forkus, the Service Department, up. It's, to the council, it's a tension that there are several very significant contracts that the administration would like to put in front of us very soon. I believe the 8th of this month, if I've got that date right. And I was only able yesterday to get my first look at, at this. And I think that the council needs to be exposed to it quite as often as possible and as much as possible between now and then. But I think it's, would be very important for the council to be informed, not only the substance of the contracts obviously, but, but the timeline and the timeframe involved in here because this is a very awkward position for a legislative body to be put in. But I understand that we're in a transition process here that makes it very difficult for us to act in a different way. But I want to have a thorough discussion here and I certainly want the council to, to weigh in in terms of any concerns they may have about either the substance or in particular the timeframe that the council is expected to make these decisions in. Would you like to go ahead?
Yeah, before we proceed, please turn off your pagers and cell phones. We are in an official meeting and we don't need any pages and cell phones going off. Thank you.
Councilman Brady, or from the President to Councilman Brady, I'm Rick Warner from the Office of Health and Human Services. And Deb Forkus and I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you and brief you about the provider contracts that are, that we hope will be on the, your February 8th agenda. I just want to say in response to Councilman Brady's opening, I do apologize for the fact from all of Human Services, not just the Department of Children and Family Services, that we are bringing a tremendous number of contracts to you early in the year. Our historical practice has been to negotiate contracts for service for the county fiscal year, which is, which is the regular calendar year, late in the year and submit them to, under the Board of County Commissioners timeframe, in November or December and have them either passed by the end of December or in January. In many cases, I think, including these contracts, we pay invoices in January for December services. And then we start to, we start the contracts essentially by paying in February for January services. And so I apologize for the fact that we're bringing you not only these contracts, but probably substantial numbers of them over the next few of your meetings that are quite large and that span the entire year or portions of the year. And that's because, that's the way most of our contracts are done. Occasionally, we have contracts that are on the state fiscal year basis if we have, if they're almost purely state funding. And as you, as you may know, the, the state fiscal year is July 1st or June 30th. So I think you'll see sort of a cycle of contracts from us. And Councilman Brady and I have had this conversation for just a minute. You'll see cycles of contracts for us. They are generally at the end of the year, at the end of the calendar year, or the beginning of the new calendar year, or in, right around July 1st. But I would say the substantial portion of them come in January, either in December or January because most of our contracts are on a county fiscal year basis. I now want to turn it over to Deb Forkus, who is in charge of the Department of Children and Family Services, to walk you through the contracts that we hope you will consider on February 8th. And I'm assuming we can make this an interactive process.
Well, Madam Chairperson, just in response to your opening comments, please, whatever you have, get it to us.
Sure.
If you, now you're talking about something beyond February 8th, I'm not shocked or surprised. I'm just saying, whatever you've got, get it to us because, you know, we have got to be able to have as much time as possible to absorb this information, or it's going to be very, very difficult.
Sure. And Councilman, we will endeavor to do that on, on all the contracts.
I'm very pleased to be here and I'll, I have a presentation for you that I hope will be helpful. It's fairly substantial, but I'll try to be as brief as I can. This is a very serious topic that we're talking about because these particular contracts are what we call our board and care contracts. So all the children, what represents these contracts are all the children in the custody of the Department of Children and Family Services who are either in a foster care, meaning that we have custody of these children. They are placed in either a foster care placement, a residential treatment placement, or group home. So they are not placed with their parents and they are not placed with a relative. So these are, represent all of our contracts. We also have our own foster homes, but we are not talking about, those are not contracts. It's, these are, and these are providers, there are 32 providers. There's providers, as you see, from everything from Parmadele, Parmadele to Bear Foundation to Belfair, to Cleveland Christian Home. And we have an extensive number of children that are in these contracts, almost 1,000 children. So, and all these children have been in these placements for some time. So what I thought I would first do is talk to you a little bit about some of our challenges. Some of the challenges that the department has, especially now with the, what we call the economic meltdown in Cuyahoga County, we're seeing more and more children coming into our custody. We only take custody when they cannot remain safely in their own homes. But what we're seeing is people that we have never had contact with before, people that cannot afford food, people that have lost their housing and their jobs, and people that are experiencing mental health and substance abuse both at the same time. So the kind of families that we're dealing with are very complex and very difficult. And many times the children have many issues that go along with how they were raised in their households. I wanted to give you just a little information in relation to our custody numbers. In the report that I show you there, you will see the number of children that are in our custody, and we've had a substantial reduction since 2004. That's a national trend that's going on. There was a time in child welfare where we had many, many, too many children who could have been safe in their own homes, but because of the way the times were, we took custody. And so what we try to do right now is, we try to make sure we get the right children who, who are not safe and make sure that all the services are in place so that when we can keep them in their home safely, we do, as I said. So you can see the reduction that we have. At any given time, we have anywhere between 887, I think the number is 1908 today, of children. And children come into our custody, we work case plans with families. When children can safely return home, they return home. Some children never return home. We move towards more extensive custody, which is what we call PC, permanent custody, and then those children are up for adoption. They also remain with us. So just to give you a sense of what's going on, we've had a 46% reduction in the numbers. One of the things that I wanted to talk to you about is residential placements. Residential placements, when I came to the agency, I came to the agency in January of 2009, and one quarter into my time there, I recognized that there were so many children in residential placement that we were not going to be able to live within our budget. And so I was very concerned about that. So we really started taking a really good look at the children that were in residential treatment. And in the residential treatment programs, those are programs, our in-county programs, our Brea Children's Home, Catholic Charities, Parmadele, Belfair, Applewood, those are our residential providers. And it is a very, very structured, strict program where children are removed, they are in residential, they have around-the-clock care, and they generally have fairly significant problems. And so I was very concerned about the children that were in residential, and so we really started looking at the numbers. And it was very clear to me that children remaining, were remaining in residential for very long periods of time, was very costly to the taxpayers, and quite frankly, it wasn't in the children's best interest. Sometimes out of sight, out of mind, I think, is what was happening here in this county, and children remained far longer than what they needed to. And many times the providers would tell us, look, they're ready to transition into homes, and they stayed far beyond that. So we started putting some things into place to make sure that, utilization management program where we were watching very closely so that when children were ready to leave residential, we had a foster care bed available if they were going to foster care, or if they're going to a relative or the family, that there were things in place long before they were ready to leave. That way, we were really rea, we were really able to reduce our dollars and our numbers. We also started looking at children that could go into a high level of foster care so they could remain in the community, in the same school hopefully that they came from when we took custody, and that we could provide wraparound services that would make them do just fine in those placements. And we watched very carefully what our numbers were, and we looked at outcomes, and we could see that those children were not disrupting. Now, the reason why I bring this up is there's a significant difference between what we pay a foster care placement and what we would pay a residential. Residential can be $300 up through 400, 450 actually, per day. And that would be the per diems that we pay for those deep-end children. A foster care placement can be no more than about $150 a day, and it can run between $90 and $150. So you can see the substantial cost reduction, and it's better for children. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that, but I wanted you to hear just a little. A long time ago, I was with the agency for about 10 years, and I left in 2005. I went to Summit County and then I returned as the director. I was the assistant director in Summit County. But before I left, in 1998, I was the deputy that was responsible, I was administrator that was responsible for placement services. And when I got to the organization, it was very clear that there was no rhyme or reason as to how we paid our providers, and we had no leveling system for children. Our belief is that every child is different. They have a different set of circumstances, and they need a different set of treatment which is tailored for them. And what was happening back then is, we didn't look at children individually for their needs. At that time, we had 6,600 children in our custody, which was huge. We were lucky to have a bed open, or a bed in residential, or a bed in foster care. And we weren't very choosy or picky back then. So what we decided to do was come up with a new structure on how we leveled children. And what we did is, we developed a leveling tool, and we had a consultant at the time, her name is Tracy Field, and actually Tracy Field right now is the director of the Annie Casey Foundation in Baltimore. Tracy was our consultant, and she worked very closely with me and my staff to try to figure out, how could we get all the information that we needed to know about children who came into our custody and develop a tool or a questionnaire? We would have all that information, and then we would be able to relate that to foster parents and to providers so they would know what our children's needs were. And based on that, we came up with a scoring, behind the scenes, it's all electronic, where children are scored. One, a level one is basic foster care. That means that generally, children are younger, they, they don't need as many services, and the cost is fairly low. Level two and three are children that have more significant problems. They can have ADHD, they can have school problems, they can have significant mental health diagnosis, but they can be, they can remain in foster care in the community where they came from. Level four children is what we call therapeutic foster care. And what that means is, is those are children that have a severe degree of issues. They, they, they could go into residential, but with a very good wraparound plan and many services in place, they can be maintained in foster care with very few children in the home, so they get a lot of one-on-one care from highly skilled, trained foster parents. And level five, of course, is our general residential, and a level six and seven is our acute care. Those are the ITC programs, intensive treatment programs, which are locked units generally speaking, for children that may harm themselves, may be suicidal, may have very serious mental health diagnosis and need psychiatric care 24/7. So what we did was, we normalized, we looked at our rates, we looked at what children needed, and we leveled children accordingly. And then, of course, our, our levels in terms of rates, our per diems, also made sense. Level one was our lowest, and we worked up from there on regarding our rates. I think this is really important that you know this. We started this in Cuyahoga. It's used almost in every county, all 88 counties. We've given it to all 88 counties, and they use a different form of this, but they all use the tool. It's been nationally written up by the Casey Foundation, and it's used in many other states in the country. It's the norm. So really, we went from a three-page document which asked questions about children to a 26-page document, asking every question that you can imagine that a provider would need to know about a child, and that we came up with a leveling system. One thing that I wanted to tell you is, is that all these providers that you'll be voting on, they are all licensed by either the Ohio Department of Jobs and Family Services or the Ohio Department of Mental Health. That's who their licensing body is. We do not license them, we just contract with them. We are also monitored, and our oversight body is the Ohio Department of Jobs and Family Services as well, meaning the Child Welfare Agency. They have a lot of rules and regulations. They, the majority of the people that we contract, of the organizations that we contract with are accredited. And we also have our own monitoring, but they're highly monitored by ODJFS and ODMH. So I wanted you to know that. We have, back then, one of the things that occurred was that because the rates were out of line, we sent, we spent a substantial time working with our providers so they knew that we were going to implement this tool, we knew that we would be normalizing the rates. They were working with us for several years, and there were significant rate reductions for many, many organizations. And one of the things that I want to tell you is, is that there has not been a rate, a rate increase with any of these providers since 2007. So when we moved ahead and prepared this contract, it's the same rate that they've had since 2007, just because of our financial problems. We have the lowest rates of these providers throughout the state. Many other counties, like large, large counties like Franklin County, Hamilton County, they contract with the same providers that we do, and they have substantially high rates than what we do. But all of them recognize our financial situation and what it's been, and we, and we've had a freeze. Prior to 2007, that, there were numerous years where there were no rate increases as well. So I thought that would be important information for you to know. The one thing that I did want to tell you is, is Steve Ritz is a prosecutor who works with me. Our contracts have remained the same with the exception of anything that changes in, you know, the Ohio Revised Code, or any of the rules that change, the contracts change periodically to make sure that we're in line with what, what the new regulations are in the state. So I thought that was something that you might want to know. This year, one of the big focuses that I have is that I believe that children need to remain in the county where they live. And for a while there, we had many children placed very far out of counties. I also think that we need to keep children with providers who have either foster homes or residential children in our county. We watch very, very closely to make sure that as many children that we can place in our county, that we do that. We only go out of county when we can't find that foster home that meets the needs of a child. And that's how we pick. A lot of people say to me, well, how do, how do you choose what provider, you know, what provider to go to? And it's individualized, it's based on the child's need. And sometimes it could be, for example, a two-parent home, the child needs a two-parent home. It could mean that the child needs a specific type of training that this foster parent had. Sometimes we have very large sibling groups where we may be placing six or seven siblings together. We feel it's very important to place sibs together. And that's the longest lasting relationship in any person's lifetime. It outlives relatives, parents, and so we feel it's very, very critical. Sometimes some of the families that we deal with, there's numerous children, and we can have a hard time finding placements for them. And so there are a couple niche organizations that are not in county that, that's what they focus on recruitment. And we've asked them to recruit here in Cuyahoga, and they are recruiting in Cuyahoga, but sometimes we need to go out of county to make sure that we have a home that'll meet the needs of children. In terms, I'm going to move ahead, I'm going to talk a little bit about our tier system. We have a tier system. It's tier one and tier two, and it's something that we put in place in 2009. What happened was, we, the, the in-county providers, they would very much like us to use them first. And these are providers that are all, their corporate headquarters are here in our county. So one of the things that we do is that when we send referrals out, they go to tier one first, and then we go, then the referral goes to tier two, which could be providers that are not in the county. And then what we try to do is pick the best home based, based on that. You know, tier twos aren't so thrilled. They would like us to use them as well, and we do use them, but we only use them when they have a bed that's in county. We try very hard to keep our children closer. It's more efficient, it's better for kids because they can visit their families, they can be closer to their families. It's, it's more cost-efficient for our organization. So our staff aren't traveling far with, there's, sometimes there's a lot of cost with that. So we, and we really think it's important that when we remove a child from their home, that they remain with, in the school, as I said before, near their neighbors, near people that know them. We feel very str, I feel very strongly that just because a family abuses and neglects their children, that we shouldn't make the child pay by removing them from everyone that they know and people that care about them, especially teachers and their friends. So we work very hard. One of the things that I wanted to talk to you about very briefly is, despite the fact that ODJFS and ODMH monitors their, their providers, we also monitor them as well. We have a unit that monitors to make sure that our providers are in compliance with our contract. They look at their records, they look at their outcomes, they make sure that they're in compliance to, to make sure that the provider has done background checks on everyone. So they not only look at the personnel files, but they look at all their documentation. The other thing is, is we also have resource managers and a separate unit who works as liaisons between the providers and between our staff. And they work out any problems, or they bring to us if a, if a provider is not meeting their goals, or they're having problems with them. So we spend a fair amount of time and money through our staff to make sure that we have I think I'll, well, the one thing that I'd like to talk about on, on page three is, is a little bit about our forecasting and how we decide what the money will be. You know, we don't have a lot of control over who comes into our custody. The numbers vary from year to year. And I can be very frank with you by saying that we, as you well know, thank you, Jane, as you well know, we have had a lot of media attention. With the media attention that we've had, our calls are up on our hotline. We can have, you know, way more than 30,000 calls a year. On any given day in our organization, we have custody of 18, 1,900 children in our custody, but at the same time, in our ongoing roles, we have 5,000 cases that we're managing of children that are in their own home, that have been abused and neglected, but it's not necessary for us to remove. So our numbers are extensive, so 5,000 children on top of the 2,000 children that are in our custody. So our social workers are pretty busy, keeping, to make sure that they're making their visits and doing the things that they need to do so that, that children are safe. So we don't know what the numbers are going to be. And so many times, of course, with related to our budget, we have, over the years, we've had a pool of money that we might not necessarily spend because we can't control. When I took this job, Jim McCafferty, we've had a long history in this county of children, Child, Children and Family Services has not lived within their budget, okay? Because we can't always control numbers and because we have not been efficient. And when I took the job in 2009, Jim McCafferty made it perfectly clear to me that I need to live within my budget and manage my budget. And so one of the things that I would talk to you about on page three lays out where we were in 2007, eight, nine, and 10. We've always had a pool of funding in this budget because of the disparity of numbers. And sometimes it's been as high as $20 million, and it's been as low as maybe 10, 10, $5 million, $7 million because we can't control the numbers. When children need to come into our custody, we take custody of them, we protect, that's our job. But we can't always determine that. And of course, we forecast every month, every quarter, mid-year, and sometimes we have to move money. We have to have the ability to have the flexibility because we always don't know which providers, we have contracts in place, but we're not always, we always don't know what the numbers will be. Although we forecast every year, sometimes we can be off a little bit. We may have more children that go in foster care and fewer children that go into an ITC program because of the individual needs of the children. So we watch very closely the budget. And as you can see, if you look at the grid on page three, one of the things that you will see is that our budget has been reduced since 2007. And you can see, it was 61.8 in 2007, and in 2011, my budget was 52, my budget is 52 million, 319. And as the budget has been decreasing, there has been some savings, but you can see in 2009, we had a significant savings. And some of the things that I looked at were inefficiencies in the agency. There were some things that we were doing that I felt that, you know, we could have been much more efficient. Some of the things is being on top of children that don't need to go to residential, and that could be managed in level four foster care. We had a fair amount of savings in, in 2009. And as I shared with you, when I got to the agency and I could see that we were well over budget, we had to really put a strategy in place to manage the children, making sure that all their needs were met, always, children come first, but to be as efficient we could as to have these placements waiting for them, as I told you. So you can see some of the efficiencies. In 2010, we had a significant, we came in $11 million under in, in this line. And that was due to our reduction in residential. Between 2009 and 2010, we reduced our residential numbers by about 50%. Children didn't need to go there, and they didn't need to stay there as long. And we not only monitor their outcomes, we continue to monitor their outcomes, and those children, when they go home, don't come back. And so we're looking very closely at outcomes to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And I can tell you that we are. The statistics are unbelievable with children being in foster care and with good wraparound plans in the community. So I wanted you to have a sense of our budget. I want to be able to answer questions for you. In closing, the things that I would tell you is, is that we have 32 high-quality providers that provide some of the high, most, their, their beds are, are wanted by all 88 counties, especially the large metros. There is a healthy competition amongst them for foster care beds and residential beds. They are, we, but when we choose a placement, we choose, choose it because it meets the needs of the child. We not only document why we chose that placement so that when the state comes in, they can look to see why we chose the placement based on the children's needs. And of course, we have our, our rating system and how we do that, our tool. One of the things that I want to talk to you is, is that, you know, we do have very good relationships with our contract providers. We are very transparent. They get a list of all the names of the children and where they wound up every single month so they know that there, there's no disparity. We also give them the reasons why children were placed, and whose beds. I feel that transparency is very, very important so that people, you know, are not concerned about, you know, well, why does Agency X have more business than, than we do? It's based on the children's need, and anytime they have a problem or they question, you know, they have the report, and they can always call either myself or the staff to talk about their problems. I meet every single month with two different organizations, the in-county organization of all executive directors, they call themselves the Co- of all executive directors, they call themselves the Coalition, and the out-of-county providers, which are called the Alliance. We have a monthly meeting with them. We talk about finance, budget efficiencies. We talk about quality, and they're well aware of, you know, where the agency is moving. We are touted as having a very strong relationship. But what I'd like to tell you is it's straight talk and very, very honest discussions with our organizations about, you know, what we feel we're getting and, and what kind of value. And I think that we have 32 providers, and I'm very pleased to say, that provides the highest quality services possible.
Madam Chairperson.
Brady.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. And to Ms., is it, it's Forkus, right?
Forkus, right. Call me Deb, please.
I appreciate you being able to squeeze a succinct presentation that would have probably taken an hour into 20 minutes. And I know that this is a difficult kind of a position to be in. We are trying to move from one system to another system. These, this kind of discussion would be more properly take place in a Health and Human Services Committee over a period of several hours. And as this council has the opportunity to weigh in as the year goes by, and particularly in the budget process later in the year, I think I speak for my colleagues in saying that the process will be very different than what it's been in the past, and I think that's what's anticipated. What I'd like to, to do, Mr. Warner or Ms. Forkus, is to just get right directly into these, into the contracts that you want to put before the council, and try to give us your best shot at what, what you're doing and why you're doing them, and also why you need to do them so quickly, or what would appear to be quickly to us.
Sure. All right, well, let me just say, in terms of, there is no method to pay our providers. Our January invoices, our December invoices are already in. Our January invoices will be sitting there, actually, the third day, third or fourth day in February. The importance of these contracts moving ahead, and I do apologize for, you know, such a short notice, and I do understand what, what you're saying, is the fact that because of the economic climate, most of these providers are going to have a hard time making payroll. I have met with every single executive director about the situation that we're in in terms of, of these contracts. They're, they're well aware of it, but they're very, very concerned that they don't have the reserves to cover more than a month or two. And so that, that is a concern, and it's a concern for us as well. In terms of these contracts, would you, if you look at your last page, this is a list of all the providers. I would be happy to go through the list if that's what you would like me to do. And would you like me to talk a little bit about each?
Members of the committee, as you, as you see institutions that you know are in your districts, please, please speak up. But to give us your best shot.
Sure. Just to say that we, we use the same boilerplate contract for every organization, so you'll see, it's the exact same contract. What is different is, of course, their per diems and their rates, depending on what they provide. So I will talk to you a little bit about each organization. So the first organization that we have is an organization that is called Act One. Interestingly enough, this is an organization that is actually going out of business. There are very few children in this organization right now. It's, it's, they have provided a high-quality service, but they, because, and, and we know this is going to happen, we've seen this, that there are agencies that are teetering and not being able to continue with the business. And so we...
Excuse me, Madam President, I'm not sure I'm following the number. You said Act One, and I show...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Catholic Charities is number one of mine? Thank you.
Sorry, grabbed the wrong one. I have two different ones. I have one in, from, pardon me. I have it two different ways. I put it in alphabetical order if you wanted it that way and had questions, and I also put it in order by the amount of money. All right, the first organization is Catholic Charities Parmadele. I think you're all aware where Parmadele is. This is our, really, one of our largest providers. We have had a long history of working with Catholic charities. We have worked with Catholic charities for over two decades. We have had some recent changes with Catholic charities. Sorry. The changes have been that they have moved from a variety of different programs. They had a general residential program. They do have a foster care program, but on their campus, their general residential program is no longer a program. They have converted over the last year, all of their programs right to an ITC. And their intensive treatment program is a very expensive program. Their program runs $400 plus. These children, it's a locked facility. There are psychiatrists that are dealing with these children. These children are very aggressive children, and they require a lot of one-on-one. They're, they do an excellent job. The outcomes have been there. We measure their outcomes in terms of how children do when they leave. They are educated right on campus, on their campus, and like I said, we've had a very long history. And the highest quality, they have a state-of-the-art, and I mean state-of-the-art residential treatment facility.
Madam Chair to Ms. Forkus, it's my understanding that this allocation reflects a significant reduction from last year. Could you tell us how much of a reduction that is and why that's the case?
Yeah, it's about a million point five reduction. What you're looking at is a nine-month contract that we're entering with them. And the reduction is, is three reasons, actually. One reason was what I just shared with you, that they had a complete changeover. They are no longer providing general residential. They're only providing foster care and intensive treatment. The second reason why the budget is lower is last year, they underspent their budget significantly. We just didn't have as many children. And when I talk to you about my strategy for children who didn't need to go to residential, the ITC center saw fewer children. And so clearly, we weren't spending the money. It wasn't necessary for us to spend the money. The other thing is, is we also had a $6 million reduction from last year in our, our overall allocation in the whole board and care rate. So you'll see that generally, the dollars are, are fewer with all 32 providers.
Madam Chairperson and Mrs. Forkus, because this allocation, we'll call it, right? Allocation is, is the largest, and because the reduction is also, I believe, the largest, could, could we use this as an example? And could you walk us through the process of how you got, your, your, the process that you went through with the people who, at, at the organization, and how we got from, say, sometime last year, where you find, wherever you think is appropriate, up to the point we're at now? And do you follow me?
I think I do. Just in terms of the process of how we select a provider or don't select a provider?
No.
I'm sorry.
The, my concern, when I first, when I first saw this, was only yesterday, was how well-informed the people that run the organization were about this, this reduction. And I did speak to you on the phone earlier, and, and that was quite helpful. But for the, for the, for the council's edification, if you could use this as an example of, of your relationship with this institution and how you've arrived at this decision, and how they've been informed, and what kind of a process took place from whatever point, whatever point you think is a rational beginning of it to now.
Sure, sure. In 2009, I was very upfront with all the providers related to what the residential reductions would be. They knew that my, I shared with them, we had open dialogue with the executive directors of each of these organizations to talk about the fact that we need, that, that we were spending money that I felt that children could, that necessarily shouldn't have been spent. And they were very well aware that we were looking at length of stays. As a matter of fact, they worked with us to make these reductions. And they've always worked with us around reductions because it's best, it's the best interest of children if they don't need to be in the most structured setting. It also happens to be part of the ODJFS rules, that least restrictive, and they look at our documentation to make sure that it's least restrictive. So I had discussions, Maureen D. is the person that I speak to, as well as Jeff, who is a director. Maureen D. is over, Jeff. They were well aware of what their allocation would be for this year. They knew, we've had dialogue back and forth with all the directors about, you know, what the numbers look like. Every single month, we share a report with them. They know why they're getting referrals, or, or if they don't have a bed and they reject a child, they're well aware, and we work with them. And every quarter, I meet with the directors and give them budget forecasts. So they have the forecast, and they're well aware, and Parmadele was certainly well aware.
Ms. Madam Chair to Mrs. Forkus, so that all of these organizations are, are well aware and not going to be surprised in any way about the level of allocation that they're getting.
They're all aware. There'll be no surprises.
Any questions from, I'm a Madam Chair, I'm looking for some questions from the committee about this particular issue or in general.
Mr. Jemann.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My, my question is, you know, I, I'm very familiar with Parmadele's, because when they were putting this in a few years ago, or a number of years ago, of course, all the streets were concerned because of the degree of the children's problems that were going to be there.
Right.
Of, so you're, you're budgeting, but we really don't know, it can't be that predictable how many real trouble children you're going to have. If there was a, a greater need, say, and there was a spike in, in 2011, what happens? What happens?
We always have a pool. There's always, always been a pool of funding that is not, that we, it sits, it sits not in contracts, but it sits in the line item where we can pull from. So we don't necessarily, let's say we have $40 million, and we're only contracting for, we have more, we have more than that, we actually have $53 million. Let's say, talk about last year, for example. So we may not bid all that out, I mean, in terms of the, the contract. So we always keep, we always have a set aside for spikes so that we know that we'll have the money. And we're very cautious, you know, about that. And again, we can't predict, but we always have a pool that we know is our, our fallback pool. And sometimes when we underspend, that's the same question, well, why, you know, well, we don't always know what the numbers are going to be or what the children will look like in terms of care, what they need.
Mr. Miller.
Madam President, Ms. Forkus, my, my question extends off of Councilman Jemanna's question. I presume these contract amounts are based on the expectation of how many children are going to be served by the agency and what their rate per diem is for the various tier levels of children that, that they serve.
Correct.
And my question is whether, whether there's a reconciliation process at, at the end of the year where, where in fact, they spend, they see more children than we anticipated, we sent them more money, and if they, and if they don't see as many as was anticipated, then they send us money back. Is this what happens?
No, they never send us money, well, it's not, it's not that easy. It's a very fluid kind of thing. The contracts read up to this amount, but not, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's how much they will spend, and we move money. We are very cautious every single month to look at who's in care at the, at the last day of the month. We do, we do quarterly, we do monthly projections, we do quarterly projections by level, by every single contract. And then at the mid-year, we will move money, generally speaking. If we see that there's an organization that we may not have enough money in there, we'll move from another. And this has been a standard practice with organizations. They're aware of it, they, we do an amendment, they sign. But more importantly, you will mostly see it around the third quarter. Third quarter is a real critical time for us in terms of spending because of the volume and the numbers. And yes, it's fluid, we move money, and then any money that is not spent, that money is gone by the, by the time we close out our year, that money goes back into the general fund.
Mr. Schrein.
Yes, Ms., Ms., Madam President, Ms. Fork, Ms. Forkus, a couple of questions. Are any of these groups in here controlled group corporations whereby the same group is actually showing up two and three times on the list in regards to it?
No.
Because I guess I was under the impression that maybe Belfair and, and Applewood were part of the same group corporation?
Pardon me. Yes, that is the only one, pardon me.
Oh.
Applewood, Applewood is, is the only one. They have a, an organization called Wingspan, and they...
They have an educational company, and I think all kinds of other things.
They manage, my understanding is, is that Applewood has a separate board from, from Belfair, but Belfair manages, for example, their HR department manages other, other things and has the selection process in terms of the director, et cetera. So that is the only organization like that that I'm aware of.
Mr. Brady, in regards to that, I think it'd be, it would be nice to know if there are other controlled group corporations to start to show up so that we can know really what the county's expenditure is through a single source. Because when you start seeing names, and I don't know whether there's other ones that, I know you indicated initially, no, there weren't.
I'm sorry.
And I'm not trying to say it got you or anything like that, but I just would, would love to know when an agency or an organization packages their name under different categories, whether or not we're seeing them showing up so that in reality, it sounds to me as though Belfair and Applewood actually are the highest expenditure, not the, not the Catholic charities. So then I'm not sure it makes any difference as long as they're the right service provider and everything about that.
I will make sure...
Where it does, yeah, where it does make a difference, as far as I'm concerned, Ms. Forkus, is my concern when your comment was that some of these organizations only are carrying two months' worth of financial reserves?
There are some, some smaller organizations that are struggling financially. And it's not just the smaller organizations, it's one of our concerns for some of the larger organizations as well. They don't have, at one time, many years ago, they had huge reserves, and they don't have the reserves that they once, that they once had.
Madam President, I'm not asking them to be our bank. That's certainly not the appropriate response.
Right.
But I am concerned that any organization that, that has a tough time weathering two months with the cash reserves, and we're depending upon these, the, the number of children going to these institutions and these organizations, if they can't weather a two-month hiatus, what are we going to do? What are contingencies? That really bothers me that an organization, do we, do we do financial background checks? Do we get financial statements from these organizations to know whether they have? I know that we're not the authorizing body that comes from Columbus, but what do we do in the but-for situations where they, they cannot make it through a tough storm?
Well, we have a, a, part of our, one of our deliverables is that they have to give, they have to provide us with their audit. When their audit is available, they send that over to us. We do review, you know, their audit. I, I can't say that, you know, we are very careful from our financial department that, you know, we're only paying, you know, for those children that are in placement. I mean, that's what we look at, but I can't say that we have any auditors that are, are looking at them.
Madam President, I would ask that we, in, in our contracting, when we start to go into contracting, it has nothing to do necessarily with this selection of contract providers because I would be giving the same exact series of questions whether or not it's a service provider doing roads for the county or doing any other work. If they only have two months' worth of financial reserves, it's a scary situation for, for a business going forward. And I look at these, yes, they're great service providers, but they're also a business, and that's my concern.
All right, Ms. Conwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair to Deb. And to, I spound on what Jack, Councilman Jack Schrein said, maybe you can, since we're meeting with you guys tomorrow, maybe you can make sure that we have some of that documentation of those companies that are, only have two months' reserve, so we can take a look at that in, in committee or semi-committee. My question to you is, how many times a year did the contracts be brought forth to the, in front of the Board of County Commissioners? How many times a year did, did you guys come? Can you give me a rough, a rough estimate of how many times you brought?
Well, all the contracts have the same dates, all these providers. It's initially at our first, you know, somewhere in January. There are times that we... at our first, you know, somewhere in January. There are times that we may move money, maybe one, no more than two times. There are, there may be one or two providers that we have amended, done a second amendment to move money. But it's generally, and not all, and not all providers, you know, I could, if you'd like, I, I could go back into 2010 and count up all the amendments for reductions. Sometimes we're adding money, and sometimes we're taking money away. It just depends on the flow of the children. But if you'd like that information, I could go back and have my staff do that by each provider, if that would be helpful to you. If it's, and I could tell you if it's an increase or a decrease, and what it was.
Thank you.
Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Madam President. My question is somewhat related to Councilman Miller's regarding the contracts. They're not given this money all upfront. Are we invoiced monthly or quarterly, and then we issue check based on the invoice?
Correct. They, they do, they do not get all the money upfront. They send us an invoice, which is by child. Of course, we have a system, you know, we have our SAKA system, and a backup fax system, where we enter the placement of the child, the date that the child was there, we, and, and the rate, the level, all that information is in our system. It's double-checked and verified by the financial staff, as well as by the placement staff, and then it's paid. That bill, that invoice would be paid for, it's a daily per diem, for 30 or 31 days in the month, or however, if the child's there, 12 days in the month. And then we batch all those up, we send it down to the auditor, and the auditor sends a check, and it's direct deposited by, all the organizations have direct deposit now, and for that month, and that month only.
Thank you. And Madam President, are the, you made mention that this contract for Catholic charities in specific is nine-month. Are all of these contracts nine-month contracts?
All these contracts are nine-month contracts.
And then what happens at the end of the nine months? Do we?
Well, one of the things that we're looking at is a RFP process. We have not RFPed in the past, but we're looking at a new process that we will put in place in the next quarter or two.
So Madam President, so we, we will see, at some point, probably six months down the line, another RFP to go out to bid for, for the renewal of these contracts, or these services, rather?
Our expectation is, is that we're looking at that, and that we will very well do that.
I, I've got, actually, one, just one more question. Thank you. And I just had a question on foster care parents. Are, are families that do foster care, do they contract with the county, or they contract with these service organizations?
Okay. These service organizations that we're talking about, they train, they have their own set of foster parents, which are different from our own foster parents. And they, they work for that organization. They prepare, do all the updates for the state in terms of their licensing, to make sure that they meet their needs, the home studies, all those kinds of things. They make unannounced visits, as well as, of course, my case managers do as well. But they work for that organization, and then we contract with that parent organization. We have approximately, at any given time, 400 children in our own agency foster homes, which is separate from this process. But for today's conversation, these, these foster parents are working, they work for Belfair, Parrin Dale's, Bear Foundation's, whoever.
Great, thank you.
I had a question. Our clerk, Ms. Schraser, gave me yesterday these documents off the agenda with the list of requests for the contracts. And I know, I think Mr. Brady had a copy, and we, I looked over them, and they're substantially different than the amounts that you request over here. And I just wanted to understand, what's the difference in the documents?
That may have been the-
This was off the Nova's agenda.
That was the prior, when we started, we started out with one-year contracts, and we've moved to nine-month contracts.
So are these one-year contracts?
No.
No, but these, the ones you gave me, are those one-year?
Well, I don't know which ones you have, but I didn't-
Yeah, you want to see, because these are substantially different. That's why I can't understand.
Madam President, Rick Warner, again, from the Office of Health and Human Services. Let me try to provide what I think is an explanation. Historically, we have done these contracts for a 12-month basis. Again, presenting them to the Board of County Commissioners in either December or January of the new year. When, when we had the opportunity, a couple of weeks ago, to begin to brief County Executive Fitzgerald and his staff on these same contracts, they had many of the same questions that you all had about the kinds of services, how we make decisions about sending kids to particular providers, the negotiation of rates. And it was during those conversations that the, the county executive and his staff asked us to begin to consider ways to introduce more competition that was appropriate in this kind of setting for these kinds of contracts. So we came, we went back and talked about it, and we made a recommendation to him that he was comfortable with, to bring these contracts to you for nine months. And that, that, it's, it's on us, Councilman Brady, for the delay in that, because we were going back to make a recommendation to the county executive. And over the next couple of months, we want to engage both with the county executive and his staff, as well as bringing it over to have a conversation with council about how we can be, introduce appropriate levels of competitive bidding, or RFP-ing, I should say, in the context of these contracts. Historically, we have RFPed some contracts in, in Human Services, and some we haven't. We've generally had a, the ability through state law not to have to do that. But as the county executive pointed out to us, if it works for us, and in part of Human Services, why can't we look to ways to use those kinds of same competitive processes even in these contracts? So we are going to come, we are going to make a, a study of it, make a recommendation to the county executive, and if he's comfortable with those recommendations, then we'll be bringing them over to you. But you will, to Councilwoman Conwell's question, you will see more than one set of contracts this year because of our interest in trying to use an RFP process going forward. I might just say one other thing to Councilman Schran's question. There are other county entities that also work with these organizations. So when you are looking at the total county budget, and trying to see how much money goes to Catholic charities, or Beechbrook, or Belfair, the Juvenile Court also uses those providers, as does one other part of the county's Department of Health and Human Services, that is the Tapestry System of Care. So it is instructive to get a full accounting of all of the resources from the county that goes to these organizations. And it's, although the Department of Children and Family Services is the largest user of these services, it's not the only user of the, of these particular providers.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yeah, I wanted the council to know, we're going through kind of parallel processes. As contracts come before me that are under a certain dollar amount that council won't consider, I'm basically asking identical questions to a lot of the ones that were asked here this evening, and in previous council meetings. And first of all, I wanted the council to know, if there's a contract that can be delayed, if I feel that we haven't gone through every possible, you know, permutation of oversight, then I'll delay it, especially if it's in an area that we think we're relatively certain we're going to reform. So, for instance, we know that we're going to be consolidating IT functions in the county, and almost every IT contract that has come up before me, I have, I have delayed or postponed, unless it is, let's say, an imminent server failure, failure issue, or something of that nature, it's a, it's a relatively small expenditure on a, on a specialty piece of software that has to be addressed immediately. So my general approach is, has been to say no to contracts if we think that there's some, some type of additional oversight, or study of it that needs to be done. When it comes to these contracts in particular, a lot of the questions that were asked this evening, I actually, and I wish I could have been here sooner, and unfortunately have to leave shortly for a childcare issue, but it might have been instructive for, for you to be told that upfront, is that as soon as these came to me, my concern was, I had several. First of all, that I didn't, they're large dollar amounts, and I didn't want to approve a year-long contract until we had had time to do appropriate oversight. But I also understood that these are care issues that are sensitive, and we have to, we have to take that into account also. Secondly, I had questions about what the procedure is in terms of actually auditing the quality of care, and the, and the specifics of care that are provided. Now, many of these, all these institutions have good reputations, some of them are nationally renowned, and it isn't to cast any, any doubt as to that. But we have to make sure that we have internal policies and procedures that the new county administration is completely familiar with and comfortable with. Third, anytime there are contracts that are given out without an RFP, in my opinion, that necessitates an extra level of scrutiny from both yourselves and myself. We have started issuing RFPs for all kinds of contracts, by the way, that we don't need to, and that we are not required to. For instance, the county has traditionally contracted with entities to provide lobbying services, and that had never been our, for the, for state and federal legislative matters, that had never been RFPed before, but we're RFP-ing it. Even though that's a distinctly, you know, particular and specialized service that could never be obtained by state contract, or any other kind of boilerplate contract. So we'd be justified, perhaps, in not using an RFP, but we felt that it was appropriate. In this case, I thought, again, because of the dollar amounts, it made, made sense to do an RFP. I also had some concerns just in terms of, how have we arrived at the rates that various providers charge? Because the rates are not uniform. Now, there is an argument to be made that the rates shouldn't be uniform, there's another argument to be made that they should, but that was a level of analysis that I thought that we needed to go through. Why nine months, by the way? What I asked Deb and Rick and Joe Gartner, who also works on these issues for me, in our branch of government, is what is the shortest period of time we felt that we could do, provide these services, have some continuity of care, but also have an RFP process that's going to be fair and transparent, and have people both be designed properly, and then be responded to properly. And nine months is, is the best they felt that they could do, otherwise, we would do it for an even shorter period of time. So I just wanted you to know, that's the process we're going through. I think it tracks your own concerns, but I wanted to be, when I saw this was on the agenda, I wanted to make sure that I was here this evening to tell you that those are also, those are my concerns, and I hope you, you share, you share my viewpoint on those things. Thank you.
Ms. Simon?
You very much, Madam President. I have a question regarding the list of prospective contractors we're looking into. And I might have missed this, and I apologize if I did. Are all of these Kihauga County facilities?
No.
Are total. These are all our vendors for Board and Care, and some are in, and some are out-of-county providers. Do you know the percentage of which are in, and what are out? I do not. Okay. If you'd like, I could tell you who's in and who's out, if you'd like to know that. Sure. The reason for my question is, there's a concern out there that it's just cheaper to outsource these kids out of the county, and it sends our dollars elsewhere because it's cheaper. So I, you know, I just wanted to get an idea of how many are in. Might be easier to say which ones are out. Okay. I hope. Safi is out. They are, they're a corporate- Say it again. Number Fives, we call them Safi, Specialized Alternatives for Families and Youth of Ohio. They are in Delphus, Ohio, and they have offices here in Cleveland, but they're, what we look at is their corporate headquarters. And so they are out. Presley Ridge, their corporate headquarters, although they have an office in Lorraine, their corporate headquarters are in Pennsylvania. The Bear Foundation, they are out-of-county. Village Network is in, I believe, Tuscarara County. Applewood is in, in, National Youth Advocate Program is out-of-county. House of New Hope is outside of Columbus. Belmont Pines is in Youngstown. Christian Children's Home of Worcester is Worcester. Parenthesis is out-of-county. Pathway is out-of-county. Viaquest is in a neighboring county, but out-of-county. Diversion's is out-of-county. Glenn Mills is an institution that's in Pennsylvania. Keystone is out-of-county. Caring for Kids is in Summit County. Cornell Abraasis is out-of-county. And the other are in county. Pardon me?
Hattie Gilarlem.
Hattie Gilarlem has an office in Cleveland, and they have an office in, you know, I'm not sure about their corporate headquarters, I believe it's in Summit, I think it's in Akron, but I'm, okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
Is there a shortage of competent facilities within the county?
Yes. There, it depends on what you're talking about. Now, in terms of residential treatment, we rarely use an out-of-county residential providers, because we have a plethora of, we have more residential treatment providers in Kihauga than any other county that I'm aware of, including Franklin. So we're very, very fortunate to have the very large, the Berea Children's Home, the Belfairs, the Parrin Dale's, you know, and Cleveland Christian Home, et cetera. So there is not a shortage of beds, unless we're talking about sex offenders. Cleveland Christian Home is an in-county provider for sex offenders, but we also, on occasion, Youth Boys Village when we need the bed. But the problem that we have is, the bulk of our children are in need of foster care. And we don't pick the first home. We look at multiple homes to make sure, and then we choose the best home possible. And so there is a shortage of foster care in certain levels, especially Level Four, and sometimes in other levels as well. And it, it changes on, on a day, on a daily basis, depending on how many kids we have in placement, and other counties are vying for the same bed, sometimes in the same homes. So yes, we have a shortage. If we just contracted with only the in-county providers for foster care, we would not have the bed capacity, do not have the bed capacity that we need, and they're aware of it. We talk about this every single month. And, and we push them to recruit in county. We would very much like to keep our kids in county.
Madam President, just one quick question. Has there been an active campaign to change this dynamic, in terms of trying to develop and encourage in-county high-level foster care?
Yes, as a matter of fact, there, multiple years, we have focused on the recruitment strategy. And as a matter of fact, we do pay a higher per diem for in-county beds than out-of-county beds when it comes to foster care. A number of years back, we incentivize so that we could, because it's, it's better for kids, it's cheaper for our staff not to be driving all over the, you know, all over the state. And yes, so we've had many, many different campaigns, and they all, it's very expensive to recruit, though. It's, you know, there's an expense to that.
Ms. Greenspan?
Thank you, Madam President. To Ms. Forkus, it's just a general observation, this is something that just, as you were talking before, and to Mr. Schran's point, we set, when we go through and review our contracting guidelines, this two-month reserve obviously is very concerning. Secondly, council sets the policy, and if we give enough notice for these organizations, that we will only afford 20% of these contracts out of the county, if they want the business, they'll move in the county. And we need to be cognizant of that as we drive forward. The, it looks like it appear, it appears that since this $37 million only represents three-quarters of the budget amount, that you're going to request about $46 million in total for the year. Is that about correct? I noticed a number of these organizations are faith-based organizations, and sometimes, more often not, faith-based organizations provide a better quality of service than a county can provide. What assurance do we have that there's no proselytizing of faith being encumbered upon these children?
Well, first of all, there's a rule against it.
I understand.
As well as, as we watch very closely. Our social workers have all been trained to talk to their staff, to talk to their children who are in these placements about this issue, to make sure that they're not forced to go to Sunday School, forced to, you know, be involved in anything religious if they choose not to be. Most of these organizations, they have multiple different, children of all different faiths, and they provide multiple services if children are interested in going to a religious service, and we make arrangements for the transportation for, for kids. Anytime we get a referral, based on that, where there's a social worker, we do an immediate investigation. If we find it to be true, we report it to the state, and we do an immediate corrective action plan. We suspend until they work a corrective action plan, children going into those homes. So we're very diligent on watching that issue.
And I, I'm sorry, I just have two more questions. Do, I can understand that it's easier to, to monitor that environment in a, in a facility, but where these children are placed in foster homes underneath these facilities, underneath these organizations, are you doing, are we doing in-home visits to ensure that this type of activity is not?
Yes, we are. We do announced and unannounced visits. We see, remember, these are children in custody, we can go into a home anytime we want, they cannot say no, that, you know, that our children have to be available whenever we choose. Our workers make announced, unannounced visits- Our workers make announced, unannounced visits. We also see children away from the home. We see them at school, we see them at activities, we see them at visitation with their families. So we have multiple times to interview children to find out what's going on in a foster home without their foster parents there. And we're very vigilant about that.
A question regarding the adoption program. How many, how many families are in the process requesting adoption? How many have been qualified? And then how do you move children from foster care that are eligible for adoption through the process so that they're put into a safe environment?
Okay. We moved to, and most, all child welfare agencies have really moved to this, we duly license for fostering as well as adoption at the same time. So we have a dual license process. So we know that when we place a child, that that home study will meet the qualifications of the state either to foster or to adopt that child. So we start out right from the very beginning knowing that that's a highly qualified home. So all of our, we do very little straight-out adoptions anymore. On occasion, there may be a relative, we'll do a straight-out adoption, but generally, children move from foster care to adoption when they are available. And we have to work a concurrent plan. The state says at the same time that we're working a case plan with the parent, we also have to have a plan for the permanency and adoption of that child. And so we work two plans so that if the parent doesn't get their act together and isn't compliant with our case plan, then we move to that. And that's why we're very careful when we select a home right at the front end, even though we may always not know what, if that child's going to be adopted or not. The other thing is, is that the state says that when a child comes into our permanent custody, so when a child comes in and it's an emergency order that we get and the child is placed in foster care, as the child progresses through and the custody may change to permanent custody, we have a matching. The state rule says we must have a matching process. And there is a big process that we have to follow to make sure that anyone that's interested in adopting that child has the opportunity, they have to have a bona fide license as an adoptive parent, and then we match. We do background checks on all of our foster parents. It's done annually by the provider. We also do it at the recertification. We check constantly to make sure that there's been, there's a rule that says if they have a DUI or anything along that line, they must be report, but we look as well as well as the providers look. So we are very, very cautious to make sure that these are safe homes and these are homes that can meet the minimum criteria, but our criteria is even higher than that. If they're, we look very closely at rule violations and we take it very seriously.
Madam President, just one comment. As we, as we review this contracting process, I would almost venture to say that the county has never set forth a policy requiring X number of service providers to be within a county. And I think this would be an opportunity for us to really examine hard the opportunity of saying in X number of years, we wish to have 80% or whatever the number is of our children cared for within our county. It'll drive the business to the county and it, and I just want to make that as a general statement, as a possible policy statement for us moving forward.
Yeah, I think legitimate point would refer to Mr. Brady's committee.
For consideration. Mr. Schron.
Madam President, I think we get back to the same contracting questions we get to a lot of times, that 70%, over 70% of the dollars are spent within the county. If you look at the numbers on there, even though more than 50% of the contracts as a piece of paper are outside the county, I assume that some of those are for unique services that can only be delivered by a small contingency of service providers and that's probably part of the reason why those end up having to go to other institutions out there.
Yes, that's true. For example, large sibling groups are a major problem for us. We have had many different strategies to try to get our vendors to recruit for large sibling groups and, you know, several of the out-of-county providers, that's what they, that is their niche. We have a lot of niche agencies. The thing that I want to let be known is that we get court orders and sometimes our juvenile court magistrates and judges will order a facility, in particular residential. An example of that would be Glenn Mills. Glenn Mills is in Pennsylvania. We would choose not to use Glenn Mills, but we have a number of judges that like Glenn Mills. It's not that it's a bad organization. I mean, they do provide high-quality services, but we feel that that's not a necessary contract and it causes us issues because we have a court order and there's not a thing we can do about it.
Well, and a follow-up on that, Madam President, I think that's where we have to be very careful, that we don't pick arbitrary percentages until we understand the full ramifications of that percentage because we can mandate and we might end up finding we're doing a disservice to our children out there by a hard and fast percentage. So when you study this, Mr. Chairman, on your committee, I'd just ask that be considered.
Ms. Jones.
Madam President, Ms. Farkas, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Of the overall children that have a need of a family, well, how many are actually not adopted or not?
248 children have no, that are in our PC, have no identified person to adopt them.
Of those that ultimately age out, can you talk a little bit about the negative outcome cost? We know the per diems, you talked about the numbers of what it takes to meet the needs of these children, but what are the dollar costs to our county budget of those who actually age out, step through the doors and have no family connection in place?
If we have no family connection in place and a child is not found to have permanency, we can tell you over 50% over, the national standards are all the same, Cleveland is the same. Over 50% of those children will wind up to be homeless or they'll wind up in prison. The cost is astronomical. There's no price that you can put on a child who winds up in jail because there's no permanent, long-lasting relationship, nobody that they can call mom or dad or family.
And Ms. Farkas, I can imagine the numbers, as you said, are astronomical. I was just wondering if there were any dollar amounts actually figured out where you could look and say, if we're spending $350 or $150 per diem, but when you don't do this and we don't, what is that astronomical number? Maybe that's my fair question.
I don't have, I don't have the number. We've never, we've never done the math, but we know over 50% of the children that leave our care at 18. It's one of the biggest things we're working on right now. When I came to the organization, I was very concerned and still am very concerned about our teens that are aging out. You know, we've done a lot of things. For example, one of the things is, there's a custody type called PPLA, Planned Permanent Living Arrangement. That means that that child will stay in our custody at least until his or her 18th birthday. What it means is, is we can't sever the ties of their parents. And actually, when I was in Summit County, we challenged, we took it to the Supreme Court because what was happening was, is that we have to request that custody type, meaning the child welfare agency, and what was happening was juvenile courts were ordering us, were ordering that and giving us that without our request. So what I can tell you is, is that we have had a huge reduction in the numbers since I've been there because I don't believe in PPLA. My belief and my philosophy is children deserve permanence, permanence, no matter what it looks like. It may be a relative, it may be an adoption, it can look like many different things. And what I can tell you is, is that we don't place children in that custody status anymore. We never recommend it. Often what happens is, is it may be a parent that is severely mentally ill, they cannot care for their child and generally, we don't know where their whereabouts are. And so that child flounders in our system, all through teenagers and then at 18 or 21, when we terminate them, they have, they don't have a connection. So we no longer request that custody type. We had something like, we're down to, I think, about 140-some children and when we started, we were at 268, I believe was the number. So the number's been reducing. And we're doing a lot of work. I hired a new chief, Joe Jackson, who is really focusing on finding permanency for these kids. Many times, it's older teens, 14-years-old or that we have great difficulty finding homes for. And so we're working very hard on a strategy around employment, around identifying. We have a, we've had a very special contract where we will go into that child's record and look at any relative that we've missed, any person that they had a connection with, a schoolteacher, whoever, that we can try to recruit to adopt that child. We have done many, many things and we will continue to use cutting-edge practices to try to make sure that children have a permanent home to go to.
Mr. Brady and Mr. Raj.
Right. Well, I was just going to inform the council that Councilwoman Conwell and I will be continuing this discussion tomorrow with the folks over at Health and Human Services. And I wanted, though, when I first, you know, heard about this, to bring it in front of this council as soon as possible so that you could at least get your first glimpse of this. I have to say, I was not anticipating it. And my only question, the only question I have left for this evening, and I'm sure we'll see you tomorrow and many times thereafter, the first Health and Human Services Committee will be on the 17th of this month. We've got a lot of work to do. We want to work very closely with you. Is, the question is, why the 8th and why not two weeks later when the council has more time to absorb?
Madam President, to the councilman, the challenge for us is the one that I think Deb articulated a few minutes ago, is that because of the transition, both on the executive side and the council side, we were not able to get these contracts done in the timely fashion that we normally do it. And in fairness, both to you and your colleagues, as well as the county executive, we've had to sort of plop these on your plates very early on in the process. As the county executive said, he had questions that he wanted us to follow up on before he was comfortable, that he had done enough of his due diligence to release them for consideration by county council. So I recognize that we've put you, and our timing has put you in a bind. On the other hand, we have hundreds of children, as Deb has talked about, being served by very competent, very thoughtful, very caring organizations who have sort of taken a leap of faith with us as we've all transitioned to the new county government, that we can get their contracts into place in an appropriate time to pay them for the services that they have rendered to children. And so the, we won't be doing this to you again or to the county executive again because by this time next year, you will all know more than you probably want to know about these kinds of contracts and the timing of them and the services that they provide and the new processes that the competitive process that county executive Fitzgerald has asked us to enter into will be done. And I, so I'm apologizing, I guess, for asking for quick action. If they would not be gotten to until the 22nd, I think it would put a very big challenge on a number of organizations that are on perhaps not the strongest financial footing. Many of them do, though, I should just say, have significant resources. I mean, Belfair, Parmadale, Cleveland Christian Home, Berea Children's Home, it isn't as if they're just carrying a month or two's worth of cash flow. So I don't think every organization would be harmed if we didn't get them done on the 8th. However, in the past, I guess they've always expected us to move these in combination with all of the providers getting their contracts into place at the same time. And so that's frankly what brings us to the point we are today. If you told us that you couldn't consider them till the 22nd, we would work with the organizations that are the subject of the contracts and try our best to explain the fact that we have, you know, both put the county executive and the county council in a difficult spot, asking them to approve significant contracts in a relatively short period of time. And I have a feeling most of the organizations would be able to weather it. I'll defer to Deb if I'm incorrect in that, but it just, it strains their both financial capacity and their service capacity.
Madam Chair, I'll look forward to continuing that part of the conversation as well tomorrow.
And I assume tomorrow you can get a clarification of the two figures, the thing that we got off the agenda and?
I think I understood it from what the county executive said, but yes.
Anything, Mr. Raj?
Thank you, Madam President. I just had one comment and one question. Just to your point, in the nonprofit sector, having two to three months of reserve is not uncommon. So I think that we need to do what we can to make sure that we keep these organizations whole because this is no fault of their own. And I just had a question. These are just the contracts for placement services, correct? Are there organizations on this list to provide other services besides placement services to your department?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes. We have many different contracts and I might add, all those other types of service, for example outpatient kinds of services, counseling services, family preservation, evidence-based services, you know, those kinds of things, those are all RFP'd. We've always RFP'd all those contracts. And yes, many of the providers here have other contracts with us for other types of services like that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schron.
Yes, Madam President. Not saying that would be deferred to the 22nd. Mr. Ivory, if the executive were to process this on the 22nd, how fast would they be able to turn cash payments around? Is there any other delay that takes place beyond our approval that would delay it weeks for it to go through the system?
Madam Chair, to Councilman Tron, I would like to probably defer that to Mr. Warner based on private, previous practice.
Madam President, to Councilman Tron, it does take probably at least a week, and I'm basing this frankly on what happened prior to January 1st because we haven't yet to pay many of the new invoices since January 1st. My sense is it's probably a two to three-week process between the time we receive the invoice. Deb walked you through a couple of minutes ago, the process that DCFS uses to check and make sure, verify that the services that they're billing us for have in fact been rendered. And then we batch those payment requests to the county auditor function and then the check is issued. So if we were to get contracts approved by you on a particular Tuesday and signed that same week by the county executive, it would probably still be another two to three weeks max for them to get payments. We have in the past, I don't want to indicate that we've never had this kind of issue before. There have been times when, under the county commissioner's system, we had delays in having them consider contracts. And so there were processes back then, I think we called it sort of informally, walking through the invoices and walking through the payment process. So I think we can shorten that period of time, but I still think it would be, it probably still is a week to 10 days even walking it through the process after your passage. Right, and Deb has reminded me that because they're new contracts, they have to be set up in the auditor system. So the first payment under any, under any new contract takes longer than subsequent payments in that timeframe. But again, when we get guidance from Chairman Brady and the council president as to the timing, we will do our best to work to set it up with the auditor function and all the other aspects to make sure that we can pay legitimate invoices as quickly as we can after you pass them.
Anything further? Thank you very much for your, we look forward to meeting with you again and hearing lots of more information. I'm sure Mr. Brady and Ms. Conwell come back with information for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next, the next item on our agenda, and we don't know the condition of the weather outside, probably should not take that long. I had met with Mr. Lambert and Prosecutor Bill Mason, I believe it was last Friday, relative to the relationship between the law director and the prosecutor. And so I just have two major issues. First, I would like to talk about this division of labor between the law department and the prosecutor. And then secondly, this ability of the council to hire its own legal counsel at some point. And I have a chart, I have some information to pass out. I have to say, the chart was not prepared by me, it was prepared by Mr. Lambert and he was nice enough to give me a color copy and I didn't have a color copier, so I've indicated, marked some things in color for your information. The first top, the first document that you have is a chart that shows the separation of powers between the law department and the prosecutor's office. And so these are general tasks. You have enough? More and more? I have extras. Yeah, we can pass one out. I think you've probably seen this, those are extras. Right. And basically, the chart, it was drawn by Mr. Lambert, the ones in orange, that I've highlighted in orange, and we can give one to Ms. from the plane dealer. highlighted in orange, and we can give one to Ms., from the plane dealer, if she wants to get a copy. I don't think we have a whole lot of copies. The ones indicated in orange are what I would see as concurrent. So, they're tasks that can be performed by both the law director and the prosecutor. And the ones I've highlighted in pink are the ones that are, Mr. Lambert asserts, are exclusively provided by the prosecutor's office. So, the law director and the prosecutor can both advise and provide legal services for the council and the executive, both can prepare legislation, both can draft and negotiate contracts, but the prosecutor feels exclusive jurisdiction in terms of drafting, negotiating contracts for departments, boards, commissions, libraries, for handling litigation, and for the approval of outside counsel. If you go to the second sheet, there are, there's a statute, actually the third sheet, I'm sorry. It has a comparison for the various charter provisions and statutes providing for the legal services for the county. And as I understand it, Mr. Lambert is here, and I'm sure he'll correct me, and Mr. Morales, I'm sure he'll correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that the county prosecutor is, according to the Ohio Revised Code, the lawyer for the county. And if we choose to go outside that prosecutor's office, we actually seek counsel that is, in a sense, an assistant county prosecutor, because all of these appointments have to come through the prosecutor's office. So, my understanding is, we had talked about the ability of the council to go out and interview and engage counsel on our own. My understanding from these, from reading these statutes, talking to Mr. Lambert, and Joanne Gross and I have kind of researched this, I spent part of the weekend doing it, that we are basically stuck with the prosecutor as our lawyer. Is that your understanding, Mr. Morales?
I have not reviewed Revised Code 305...
Say it very legal, actually.
305.14 that is attached to this document, and I would like a chance to do so, but I can't say to you that there obviously is a charter provision on the law director and the role of the law director. So, certainly, that provision is, I mean, is very important, and calls for the law director to be the legal advisor to both the county executive and the council.
But there are additional legal services required by the county as it relates to, of course, litigation and criminal prosecutions clearly within the purview of the prosecutor's office, but there's also this advising and providing legal services for boards and opinion, boards, commissions, libraries, township. And this is, the question is whether this is the exclusive purview of the prosecutor's office, and it appears to me that it is. Our basic question was, which went to my second point, was the ability of the council to hire a lawyer. And when I talked to Mr. Lambert, he was gracious enough to say that if we needed a lawyer, they would then give us a list of lawyers from which we could choose, who would then be, in a sense, would be assistant county prosecutors to represent us, that we are, from what I am understanding, and, you know, maybe greater legal minds than Joanne Gross and I can find some other loophole. But I think as compared to cities, like a city council, a city under municipal charter doesn't have an official lawyer required by a state statute. A city doesn't have a state statute that says that every city has a lawyer that represents them, but we do have it under the state statute.
Again, I have not reviewed this statute, but, and no disrespect intended to your legal abilities or that of Ms. Gross, I think that it would be appropriate if we had an opportunity to review it and to discuss it with you. I mean, by that line of analysis, what basis would there be for a county charter to include a provision on a law director in the first place? So, I think...
According to Mr. Lambert, that what the law director is going to do is what I have highlighted in orange. Did you get one of these?
I do have one of those, and I understand that there may be a consensus as between, you know, that you may have reached in your discussion with Mr. Lambert. I'm not prepared to...
I'm not saying I reached a consensus, I'm just saying this is what I'm...
Yeah, I'm not prepared to say that I agree with the conclusions that have been reached. And I would like an opportunity to review it, and certainly, I'd like an opportunity to discuss it with Mr. Lambert. I know that there have been discussions with the prosecutor's office regarding these matters, but...
Yeah, I look forward to those discussions, and just a couple of other things that it relates to legal services that I think the council should be aware of, is that from time to time, the prosecutor does hire outside counsel, either because of a conflict of interest, or something that they don't need all the time. So, they meet a special lawyer in some specialized field, so there's no reason to have that person hired. So, they go out and they hire these people. Then, at some point, they have to come to the council for approval of the fees. So, that's something that we should be aware of, that they will be coming to us for approval of fees from time to time. In addition to which, and I think I discussed with some of you that may have just sort of ran into the hall, there is a number of pieces of litigation Mr. Lambert has given me a copy of, and that, and our next, I mean, on the 15th, Mr. Lambert is going to come over and then go over the, we're going to open it, we're going to have a special meeting, go into executive session, and then he will go into each piece of that litigation to tell us, you know, the nature of it, where it stands, what possibly, what kind of a risk we have. In addition to which, he suggested that we will, he will bring to us, and I don't know when that will be, in the near future, an ordinance that will provide for the settlement of cases. So, the prosecutor has to settle cases in certain amounts. We could draw some small amount that he could settle without having to come to us, say, you know, $5,000 or something. Okay, they can just settle some other amount that they would go to the county executive, and then the other, above that, they would have to come back to the council. We go into executive session, because this is obviously something we can, not for public discussion, to tell us about those settlement arrangements. So, this is just kind of information that we don't have to act on at this point. And I don't know, I think I've covered all, Joanne or Dave, was there anything at point that the council needed to know about this legal process? I do understand, I ran into Mr. Fitzgerald this morning, I guess the law department will, he's forthcoming with an appointment with the law director, so we need this information also when we do have a law director appointment, so that we can query that person about his opinions, and so that we will be prepared. Ms. Simon?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I just want to raise the issue that I'm not, I don't agree necessarily with that draconian view of the statute, that the only advisor we may have is the prosecutor. This says shall be the advisor, but I think there's, it's not precluding us to get some other opinion on this. That doesn't mean we're being advised. So, it's our...
305.14 also. So, I've provided this, everyone can, basically has the same information. You can take time to mull over this if you're having problems sleeping, it'll, you know, just start reading it.
It's our, I just want to, I'm not willing to...
All right. All right, Mr. Schreier?
Madam President.
Yes, Madam President, can we verify what Summit County is doing in regards to the same issue, because...
At the third sheet, it is the charter provision for Summit County, is on there.
Whether or not they are doing both county prosecutor and legal advisor, and has there been a precedent set with any cases to determine where the scope of authority is on both those issues?
Do you want to respond, Ms. Gross?
You know what, I am not clear about exactly what the extent of the Summit County's law director and prosecutor's duties are. I do know that they have litigated some aspects of that. What I want to be very clear about is that I am not in a position to be providing legal advice to the council, and I want to clarify that for purposes of the prosecutor's office and the interim law director. I do think there's...
She's been my research assistant.
Exactly. And I do also want to clarify that my understanding is that the statutes that you reference have to do with the county hiring outside counsel. There's a, and to me, that's a separate issue than who acts as the internal legal advisor to the council and the executive, which is the issue between the prosecutor's office and the law director, and I just wanted to clarify that.
See, my concern is that the 309.09 says the prosecutor shall be the legal advisor of the Board of County Commissioners, Board of Elections, and, you know, all other county boards, and that's, well, that's what trumps me.
Madam Chairman, Madam President.
All right, let's, Mr. Miller, and I guess the expert here, Mr. Lambert, you're going to come up and address us? Put you in the hot seat. Do you want to respond to this, and then we'll get to Mr. Miller and Ms. Simon?
I, thank you, and Madam Chairman, I don't want there to be a misimpression that the county prosecutor's office is not, one, working cooperatively with the law department and the law director, acting law director. And we fully recognize that the law director is the advisor to the executive and council, and we're not saying that that's not the case. What the chart is intending to do, however inartfully, is to say that if somebody wants our advice, we can give it to them. You don't have to ask us for the advice, you don't have to listen to our advice. It's just, it's a way of trying to reconcile the general law of Ohio, which is in the Revised Code, and which is kind of engrafted into the charter by the provision that says the prosecutor, his duties shall continue as they are provided in general law, and the fact that the charter also clearly creates a law director, and said that he is the chief, that he's to advise and represent counsel and the executive. So, what, the effort of a little research that we have done is to try to reconcile those two. We do have a quite strongly held belief that the litigation is to be handled by the prosecutor, and that the hiring of outside counsel is handled by the prosecutor, and that is based upon the way the charter was written, the very specific reference to the hiring of outside counsel. So, I think that's where we're at. I think we're certainly looking to cooperate and work cooperatively. We have two lawyers, it's a little unusual, it's not unheard of. The federal government, they have hundreds of lawyers. The state of Ohio has the AG, and there's in-house lawyers. The governor has his counsel, there's the statutory secretary, or attorney general. And Akron, I think, Councilman Tron, you mentioned, how do they do in Akron? They do have a division of labor, there's a law director, and there's a civil division of the prosecutor that has survived and continues to handle litigation. The other thing that we brought up in the briefing of Chairman Conley was, we have these entities, I'm not sure how familiar you are with them, the Board of...
That's the last list, if you, on the sheet, the pack that I gave you.
Right. I mean, these are entities that are clearly not counsel or the executive, the courts, the townships, Board of Elections. These entities need to be represented in litigation and need to be advised, and so, it's our best parsing of the statutes and the charter that that advice is not a function of the law director. Again, we've been in dialogue with the law director, we're working to, and with the county executive, we're working to work that out and come to a resolution where we cooperatively move forward in the best interest of the county as a whole.
All right, Mr. Miller?
I would share the same concerns that Councilwoman Simon brought forward, that I think the provisions of the charter that enable the council to employ staff and assistants as needed would give us some powers to get our own legal advice if we so choose. And I would point out that until a couple of years ago, Summit County Council did in fact have its own staff attorney, and that that person left employment and was not replaced for budgetary reasons, but I have not heard of there being any challenge to their right to have that kind of assistance.
Having an attorney on staff is different than just advise, you know, having an official advisor representing them in court. Ms. Simon?
Madam President, I agree with Councilman Miller, those are the points. I think I want to be clear about my objection to this just standard answer that we're bound by this particular prosecutor advice. I think with regard to ongoing, any legal proceeding, litigation, it seems like we, that our advisor will be the prosecutor unless we've written consent otherwise, but however, with ongoing day-to-day, if we need a second opinion on something, I think we're free to do that within our budget and within the charter. So, I think we do have the ability in just getting a second opinion, or a opinion, from outside counsel within our budget, and I think we have the authority by charter to hire, if we want, legal counsel and contract out. So, that's just my view of the reading of this. I think there's a distinction between legal proceedings, ongoing litigation, versus getting an opinion that may differ from that of the prosecutor.
All right, I would just recommend that you take a look at that 305.14, employment of legal counsel. This is not a decision I'm happy with, this is not, I mean, I hope somebody else finds a loophole that I haven't found, but, you know, my reading is not something that I'm happy with the finding, but I think we're stuck with it. So, you know, it's, I'm glad we had this discussion, it's an ongoing discussion, we certainly don't have to make a ruling tonight, you know, we can continue to research, but I think everybody now is aware of the problem, or aware of the situation.
Madam President, if I may, when you say stuck with it, stuck with what? Having the prosecutor as our advisor in legal proceedings versus having an opinion in a non-litigation setting?
Maybe Mr. Lambert can answer this. What you're saying is, if we were to hire counsel, hire a lawyer, and you're saying that's within our right. Mr. Lambert, I believe, says that it's not within our right. So, if we went and hired Squire Sanders and Dempsey to advise us, I believe that his argument would be that we would be in violation of 305.14, because his argument, his argument is that if we want to employ counsel, we have to go through the procedure first to ask the prosecutor, the prosecutor would then provide us with a list from which we could choose.
Madam Chairman, first of all, I don't have an argument, because I'm looking to get along with both the executive and council, and if council, and I believe that you were at the discussion with Prosecutor Mason, where he made the same offer, which is, if you feel the need to have an outside lawyer advise you, that we would be glad to entertain that request and act in a responsible and reasonable way in response to that. But I do agree with you in that is our reading of the charter and the statutes that are incorporated into the charter, is that for a county officer or body to hire an outside lawyer, they have to follow the rules of Revised Code, Section 30514. Not only do you have to get the approval of the county prosecutor, you have to file a motion with the common police court and have that order journalized. So, that is our understanding of the law.
I have another question, but I'm going to ask you after, because I don't open another can of worms. I think that we all now know the issues. Mr. Germana?
Madam Chair, at the beginning of this conversation, you said something about cities municipalities do not have, you know, outside counsel, but I can tell you, many, many times, a law director goes out and gets legal counsel, because you can't fight for both sides. So, if there's a situation, you know, internal, you understand what I'm saying? But many times, the law director, city department goes out and gets outside counsel, because we're defending a certain division of the city.
Yeah, the prosecutor does that too, but what I'm saying is that we have the state statute that mandates who the lawyer for the county is. I do not believe that cities have that.
If I could respond to Mr. Germana, Councilman Germana, I think that the same... If I could respond to Mr. Germana, Councilman Germana, I think that the same situation would pertain. It would be a matter of requesting outside counsel. Again, I believe that County Executive Fitzgerald and County Prosecutor Mason do not want to be put against each other with dueling opinions. I think they've anticipated that. I think they've come to a kind of a gentleman's agreement. We don't want to do that. So if you don't like the opinion you get from the law director, one option would be to come to us. I don't think we are looking to be the second opinion or to be the foil for the opinion of the law director. And that would be the appropriate time where you would say, we need to go outside, and then we would act on that, again, in good faith, under the spirit of cooperation that Prosecutor Mason has already announced.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Gallagher.
And I think we agree to that point, Ms. Simon. What if we get an opinion from a law director we don't like, we don't agree with? We go to you. You agree with the law director. We still are strongly in disagreement. So the prosecutor, the way it's set up right now, recommends three or four firms that we can go to. Why can't we pick our own firm? That, to me, is... Seems inherently unfair. And I think that's the glitch that... Is that where we're at, Sonny, on that?
That is exactly it. And just to defer to Madam President, you keep pointing to the statute 305.14. That talks about a legal proceeding. That's all that's... I'm looking at section D1, and I don't... We don't have to talk about this now because the weather's getting bad. But I'm not sure... That's exactly it, Colleague Gallagher, that that's the scenario I'm referencing, is this statute talks about a legal proceeding. That's different from us going outside of the purview just to get an opinion on our budget. Whether we act on that opinion or not, I think might be salient, but...
I would be glad to share with you, Councilman Simon, the memo that I have prepared, which talks about the no county officer shall hire the services of any attorney without the participation of the county prosecutor.
Is that this one?
Yes.
Okay, I can make copies of it.
Oh, okay.
It's the opinion he wrote back in October. I'll make... Yeah.
But I guess, I don't know, Councilman Gallagher, other than to promise to act in good faith, nobody wants to shove a lawyer. It would be... I mean, I've been doing this for a while. Nobody wants to shove a lawyer down a client's throat that he doesn't like or trust or believe is the appropriate person to do the job for him. I guess I would ask you to rely on our professionalism to pick a lawyer in the scenario that you described, who would zealous... You know, a lawyer is under an ethical duty to zealously represent your interests when he becomes your lawyer. And so I guess, you know, we've been doing this for a long time. Sometimes we've been met with skepticism by judges. I mean, we have the situation where we sue a judge, and then we talk to the judge about who we're going to hire to be your lawyer. And I think we've always acted in a way... We're not going to suggest a lawyer for that judge, that he's going to say, well, you've got some patsy to lay down on the other side. We would never do that because it's just that, you know, we don't need the headache and aggravation. And so I guess I believe that these issues that in the abstract look like they would really be important issues, who gets to pick, I think they dissolve when in fact you agree upon this would be a perfect attorney for us. You like him, we like him, we move on.
That I can appreciate that. But can you appreciate the position that we're in? And I would imagine that if we do get to that position, professionalism aside, we're going to want who we want because we're just not going to be agreeing. If we get to that level of disagreement, having gone through a law director and a prosecutor's office, we're certainly at that point in time skeptical of what's being done. And this may never occur, and this is something that just came up, and we... It's kind of gotten a life of its own. But we're like, we're playing at what, you know, what if? And it seems to me fair that if we did get to that point, that we should be afforded the opportunity to go the direction in which we want to go in. And, you know, like I say, this has kind of gotten a life of its own. But I think from this body's position that while we would appreciate the law director's opinion and your opinion, I've seen court of appeals cases where, you know, one judge wrote one opinion, another judge wrote the other opinion, and the attorney looked at the judge in the middle and said, now, what are you going to do?
We...
So we're kind of like the judge in the middle. What are we going to do?
I could only say that I've dealt with this. We're... How do I say this without sounding... We're big boys. We know that there's a lawyer out there that is going to disagree with us. We'd rather have a good lawyer on the other side than a bad lawyer. I've just seen these issues just dissolve because we want to get you a good lawyer, even if he's going to disagree with us. I just think, believe it or not, that's how it turns out. And so I don't think that these hypothetical crises, in fact, they dissolve. Now, when it happens, and if it doesn't, then I think we'll have to deal with that.
Yeah, I don't think we want to drag this.
Yeah, we don't have to solve it. But I do... Are you going to leave, or I can ask you tomorrow?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to stay or leave?
Oh, I think I was going to leave.
All right, well, I'll ask you tomorrow. Yeah, I'll ask you tomorrow. It's okay.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Morales, and I will continue this debate. I think Jean had one brief issue that she wanted to discuss with us, and I think we can kind of wrap up.
Yes, all I wanted to do was report that we have received a presi and notice of appeal that was filed with the county by the City of Independence concerning a determination regarding Old Rockside Road Bridge. Just as a bit of background, December 2nd, the Board of County Commissioners determined that the Old Rockside Road Bridge, which is located in Independence and the Village of Valley View, is not a road of general and public utility. It was brought forward by the prosecutor's office at that time. And so I just am updating you to let you know that we have been asked to provide information having to do with that particular determination and that I must provide the documents, minutes, agenda, the recording from the meeting, et cetera, to be filed with the clerk of courts. And this is one of those items also that Dave Lambert will be providing you with an update when he does the update for pending litigation. And so this was just to let you keep you in the loop, let you know that we did receive this and that I, in fact, have to provide this information.
So this becomes a... Goes to common police courts, an appeal from the rejection of the county commissioners back in December.
December 2nd, that's correct, yes.
Mr. Brady and Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just wanted to let the council know that the panel of council people will be interviewing a new batch of candidates for the board revision on February the 10th. Councilman Greenspan has agreed to chair that committee. Councilman Gallagher has agreed to set on that committee. We've had some others volunteer, but I have not checked the dates with them, so I'm not going to indicate who might be the third person. But we will be interviewing a new batch of candidates for the board revision to try to fill out these positions, and that will occur on February the 10th.
All right, thank you. Mr. Miller?
Madam President, just for everybody's information, I was at the county commissioners' meeting where they discussed this business about the Old Rockside Road Bridge. And what this fight is about is that the county thinks that this road does not... This bridge does not get enough traffic, that it should be considered a regular roadway that the county would have to maintain, and the City of Independence thinks that it is. So there's going to be some continued process go on about this issue.
All right, anything further? Do we have any other Ms. Lanes' business or committee reports?
Yes.
Law training.
Who's reporting on that? Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Madam President. We've been discussing inside our offices, and I did some research on the immediate need for sunshine law training for all of the members of council and subsequently the staff that's at hand at this point. In doing research, I talked to the Ohio Attorney General's Office, and we have two options. The first would be for all of us at, you know, assuming we can all go, and those that can will, on the 24th of this month at the Bar Association on Ninth Street from 9:00 AM till 12:15, and it's free of charge. We go there, we get our training that we need, and we're through. The second option is to actually hold a training session here, and some of the parameters that we would need is a room that seats 100, and that would be this room. And subsequently, we would need to get a relatively a 60-day notice to the Ohio Attorney General's Office so that they can file with the Supreme Court that that class would be considered continuing legal education, should we open that training up to the public. So in an email I sent out, I have a good number of council people and staff that have already agreed to attend the training on the 24th. So, you know, once you guys make a formal decision, I'd be happy to RSVP on behalf of each of you individually and just contact me with that.
You know, if lawyers get three hours of continuing legal education for that, I think it would be a nice service if we did it here because we'd have a lot of lawyers that would come in and be happy to get the three hours for free. And it would be a nice service and goodwill for the community. Does anybody else agree with that, or...
Madam President, I think that would be a great opportunity to invite the bar into our chamber and...
Yeah, we could sign up for however many... Keep one, we reach 100, then, you know, we could... Jean?
I was just going to point out that the other reason for possibly doing this is that obviously with the new county executive, also an elected official, their folks also have to be trained so we could do it as a countywide endeavor.
So we actually could do it up the training room, which has more seats than here?
We could. There's a variety of places. We could do it here at the county. What I will do with council's blessing is I will make a phone call tomorrow to just get some exact parameters as to what we need to do and what steps we need to take to host something like that. And then upon your guys' consensus of a date and a time, then I can take the liberty of scheduling it and spearheading this for you.
Yeah, I think if we could do it for the free CLEs, it'd be a very nice benefit for lawyers and a nice PR thing for us. Yes, Mr. Schrein?
I think you might want to check on that, George, to make sure that the Supreme Court would recognize us as being the presenter. I think you're probably going to have to let them still be the presenter. And all we can do is we will host it, host the event because I don't think we're going to be authorized to issue the CLE through us.
Madam Chair.
I will.
Yes, Mr. Germana?
Madam Chair, I'm just wondering if there's going to be an expense to the county for having this as far as instructors or anything, such as that... The only reason I say that is in my insurance office, I and every other licensed person's got to have 20 hours, and we spend a considerable amount of money for continuing education. I know it's free, but the county needs money. And I'm just wondering if otherwise, I don't know if these attorneys would be going out and paying for continuing education.
When... Like you, I hold an insurance license also and do that continuing education, and it's a cost to us. One of the questions I did ask them in my first conversation was if we would host this, how much would it cost us? Absolutely nothing. That's what I was told, unless we obviously provide water, pastries, or something like that. But as far as the actual fee for the service being provided, it's no cost to us.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
Are you recommending that those of us who can attend on the 24th should do so and get it out of the way? Or are you recommending that we as a group should do the training at the session that we're going to put together?
I was inclined to just do it at a session we put together, but if we could do both, I would... As long as the states can come and do it for free, we could do both. I mean, I just think it would be a nice PR thing for the community.
Madam President, I would recommend that some of us from your, you know, the council offices who have to comply with the sunshine laws for the public information, because this will take about 60 days or so in order to get this together, that some of us actually attend the 24th course. The staff especially should attend it in order to fulfill the requirements of the law.
Yes, George.
So, there we go. If it's okay with council, what I'll do tomorrow as a follow-up to this is I'll send out some correspondence, get a definite count of who wants to go on the 24th, and then the rest of us will attend when we present it here. And I will begin conversations with the Attorney General's Office to set something up.
I think we should do both because then we'd have it available to the public or anybody that wanted to come. I think it would be a nice PR gesture for us. All right. Mr. Schrein?
Yes, Madam President. I think it would be by doing both, we can also do that element of regionalism that we always talk about, where we can invite all 59 communities that have their... They have the same obligation. We can bring them down here. We could talk about how there is some mutual collegial things. And we could actually see whether or not there'd be somebody that would want to sponsor an event afterwards that would allow it to be an event whereby we bring our 59 communities of our county together.
All right. I've lost my agenda and my shuffle of papers. Do we have anything else on the agenda? Oh, okay. Ms. Lanes' committee reports, anything? Mr. Rogers?
I have something for miscellaneous business. I just... I made mention of this when we were doing our sessions at Cleveland State. But I'd like to have at some point, I don't know if it's today, but a discussion around providing or allowing the public to park for free in the Huntington Building during our council meetings on Tuesday.
I would suggest that we would refer that to Mr. Jones's committee. Isn't yours like Public Buildings and Public Works? Yeah, I don't know the technicalities of it, but let's refer to that committee and get back to them because I just don't know if it's possible. Maybe Joe is right. I just don't know if it's possible.
We can look into it.
We can look into it, yeah.
Our committee meeting will be February 9th. So we'll just put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, real quick, the Rules Ethics Committee will be bringing out of committee for a meeting next Tuesday. Both ordinances for first reading then to be remanded back to committee. So be on the lookout for that, and that's all that our committee has to report right now.
All right, anything further? A motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam President.
Second, Mr. Rogers, anything? All in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, adjourn.